All right, I got six thirty, bring the meeting to order if everybody could stand for the flex. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, so I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
All right, on any discussion. All right, all in favor of the agenda approval as written, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, public comment, Jackie, do we have any?
No.
Okay. Right. Student board members, Sophie is not here. So we will skip by that one, so I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented, but I think we maybe need a recusal or two.
Okay, any discussion? Now as you say.
Did you say you had something?
You gotta pull next.
I'm out.
No, he has to recuse and so does.
Oh.
I recuse myself.
Yeah.
All right, so should we just pull out the NMEA out of the consent agenda?
Yeah, should I make a new motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, modified with the NMEA contract collective bargaining agreement for the twenty-five, twenty-seven to twenty-seven school year, school years pulled out of the agenda. Do I need to pull out the MOU as well, and the NMEA MOU?
Okay. All in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of the NMEA MOU and the NMEA collective bargaining agreement, signify by saying aye.
I have a, I have a comment, but I am just wondering with this new software, with putting together the agenda, we lost like, so for example with item F, with agreements and contracts, I feel like we used to have it listed out what those were and then you could kind of click to go to that specifically, but it's kind of lost, so people wouldn't know what the agreements are unless they read, you know, scrolled for eighty-five pages to get to that. Is there a way to have that be back on the agenda, the different contracts?
The company is working on putting the hyperlinks under.
Okay, yeah.
But you should be able to click on it and do like packet ready, or does it give you an option?
I mean like when you either open the agenda or open the agenda packet. No, I don't, unless I'm missing something, if I'm at the top of, if I'm on the agenda pages and I want to know what a contract is, I would have to scroll to that.
It's, there's a hyperlink.
Oh, there is?
On the online version.
Yeah.
I think she's looking at the PDF.
On the online version.
Oh, oh yeah, I downloaded it as a PDF.
Yeah, so if you'd go to the.
Interesting.
The agenda.
Because you can put hyperlinks in PDFs too.
Oh yeah, I see it in the, okay. I just straight up hit download, I didn't even scroll on the, onto that, yeah, this is how I like to see it. Okay.
Okay, all right, so, um, I'll entertain a motion without Director Thomas, on approving the NMEA MOU and the NMEA collective bargaining agreement.
I make a motion that we approve the NMEA collective bargaining agreement for the twenty-five through twenty-seven school years and the NMEA MOU.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the NMEA MOU and NMEA collective bargaining agreement, twenty-five through twenty-seven school year? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. All right, moving down to the facilities presentation. Joan.
Good evening, everyone, please excuse the frog voice. We have been preparing, you can turn the slide Jackie, thank you. We've been busy preparing for our schools for the opening of this school year, but I'd like to give you an update of some of the work we have completed this past year. Some fun facts for this school year is we have two hundred and fifty acres, forty, four hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty-two custodial square feet that they clean, two thousand one hundred and sixty students, and this is not including TK running start. Four hundred and two employees, that's including coaches and subs. We have six schools, eight auxiliary buildings, and then we have three hundred and ninety-six thousand total square feet of instructional space. This year, we have a total of nineteen in my staff, down from twenty-one, and we have acquired our safety officers in our department. Our facility project updates in this past, we have the new well that was funded by a grant. Our well control panel is now has an alarm auto dialer, so if we do lose power, it will connect to three of our employees and myself, and we can come down and see exactly what is going on to control the water at our upper campus. AIOC, we have an ADA asphalt grant, and that was grant funded to where we put down asphalt for the buses as well as a path going straight into the AIOC building. We have multiple chiller projects up at the upper campus, our Sand Hill fire panel replacement that went down at the end of summer last year. We had it replaced. We have the Clean Bill Energy House Bill twelve fifty-seven, benchmarking and audits by McDonnell Miller, and they are grounded, funded by grant funding as well. Working with our insurance providers to ensure safety within our schools, we have provided outside winter signage and installed the installation of leak centers on all our school campuses for our boilers. We also have been dealing with our community gym quote, and this upcoming two weeks, hopefully, we're going to be having it tarted for being proactive for our rain season to meet our insurance needs. Working with our community partners, we are still working with Safe Routes to Schools, our Fish Pen Project, North Mason Regional Fire Authority sharing facilities, our Sand Hill Parks, North Mason Kiwanis Club, and the Community Bond Advisory Committee. Our large, long range planning, which instills of our five-year, our five, ten-year plan, and our highlights for those would be Belfair replacement, Sand Hill upgrades, utility upgrades to meet the EUI as per our House Bill fifteen, twelve fifty-seven. In our ten-to-fifteen-year plan, fifteen-twenty plan, we are hoping to get our elementary schools fully secure, security cameras, our CTE enhancements, additional facilities to meet enrollment needs, and playing fields for the upgrades up at the upper campus. I also want to give kudos to Sand Hill for this summer. We, Jessica brought to my attention a really interesting project to flip her school and move all her classes around to different pods. And we worked on a system and their teachers moved their classrooms, so that saved a tremendous amount of time and worked for my team, so my team thoroughly appreciated, in my department, if you go above and beyond, you get a duck. So I went to Jessica and Tyler's school and their whole teaching staff got blue ducks with sunglasses and told them they were amazing to help out doing that move. Our upper campus, at the end of the school year, we worked with the EMS for our graduation, which was really great, and it helped smooth our parking, getting people out of the campus early, and we were actually, my team was out of here by ten fifteen, and that has never happened in the years that I have been doing graduation for the past eleven years, so that was awesome. I want to give a shout out to Ron Green, Mark McKeown, Ricardo Ramos, and Devin Watson with the monetary support from North Mason Kiwanis Club. They actually did our AIOC, which is our Adult Transition Portable and Home Link Portable, a facelift. Our kids were feeling a little left out, all our schools were looking great, and they just felt that they were not part of our district, so we wanted to them to feel special, we have a special sign for them, and it turned out really great. Belfair, we did, installed a DPS fencing, so they can have a safe playground for our youngest students. Our groundkeeping has been keeping up with the challenges of landscaping despite facing challenges this year with limited irrigation due to the water pump issues. Plants are recovering and with the rainy season, we are trying to keep up with that. We are working tirelessly to ensure our athletic fields are ready for each game, and we have fourteen field sites across the district. So that is the end of my presentation, thank you, you have any questions?
What is the NMR, what is the North Mason Regional Fire Authority, what's, what are the facilities that are shared there?
Well, they do come up here, they were working in regards to the EMT program, and then they do training up at our districts, at Sand Hill, they do training as well as both Central and North Mason Regional, they use our facilities in regards to our fire pumps and our hydrants, and they maintain those, so when they do training, we help that, as well as we housed the Tunaville Fire, over five hundred. DNR firefighters are up here and they used our facilities, and we worked with them, so we have that great stakeholder partnership.
That's really cool, I didn't realize all of that, and then two more quick questions. Is there any damage that was done to the roof at Belfair Elementary when the kids were found on top of it?
No.
Okay, and then I'm curious with just, with all the smoke, how that, how our HVAC system has been handling that, like how, what are some of the ways that we're keeping?
Well, we're still keeping our COVID aspects because OSPI hasn't cleaned them up, so they're doing very well. We, before COVID, I was using MIRV thirteen's, and that was the recommended across the board, so we were already ahead of the game. And the areas that we do have, i.e. Belfair, we keep the doors closed and the windows closed. But so far, we haven't had any regulations that say we have to change our COVID from OSPI, so since keeping, we're keeping those. Our HVAC system's already fine, I haven't had any upgrades in the weather temp other than weather. So the EUIs are doing fine.
I don't have a question, I just want to thank you, you and your staff. I heard some great things from DNR and the local fire authority on how you all stepped up and helped out this summer with housing them, so thank you very, very much for that, your staff is appreciated by many in the community.
Oh, good idea, thank you, well, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Joan.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Board Development and Linkup Superintendent Updates.
Well, I would like to start by recognizing our Transportation Department, so if I could have Maureen come on up on behalf of her department. It's been, it was a challenging day today with all the traffic problems that we were having going on at the end of the day, so it's, it's been a long day for you. But I would like to just recognize Maureen and her department, we received a letter yet again from OSPI on behalf of the Ohio, the Washington State Patrol Annual Bus School Inspection. And so for the past two years, the districts met these very strict inspection guidelines and have received a letter of achievement. And when I shared this with Maureen, she told me that our mechanics have always gotten this, and so I'd like her just to accept this on behalf, we want to thank your mechanics and your entire department for everything you do for the students of North Mason, and if you'd like to say anything about this award specifically, I know that you are going to know a lot more about it at this point than I do.
Thank you very much, on behalf of my whole team. They, they work really hard to get this award, it's a process, there's two inspections, one in the fall, that is a surprise, they just show up one day and inspect twenty-five percent of our fleet. And then we have a scheduled inspection, typically around spring break is what we shoot for. And you have to get less than two percent of your buses out of service combined between those two inspections in order to achieve this letter, so it's a big deal for our team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
So our next presentation that we're going to have is from a Teaching and Learning Update. One of the district's goals is around improving attendance, and so we have a presentation that's been put together by our cabinet members and our principals. And Mr. Turner is currently representing the district at the Gates Foundation Grant kickoff in Squim, so he's been in Squim for the entire day and the program goes into the evening. So he actually recorded a little video for us, kind of giving us a little overview of the district attendance process and some of the goals, and then we will be hearing from each of the buildings with some of their work that they've been doing.
Good evening, I'm Chris Turner, Director of Systems and Supports, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about our district attendance process. I apologize that I'm not there in person, I have a conflicting grant-related meeting that I need to attend. To start with, I want to share my screen so we can walk through the slides. We have a proactive attendance campaign. This is our process in which we work hard to teach the community and our parents why it's important and how important it is for kids to be at school. The state considers anybody who misses more than ten percent of school to be chronically absent. Chronic absenteeism is a direct relation to performance in school and to graduation. So kids need to be at school, learning happens in the class. So, we want to make sure everybody knows that. If you look at this list here, this is for October's part of our calendar. For each month, we have a list of activities that a principal can pick, they can choose to do any one of these. And each month, a principal chooses to do one, and it constantly gets that message out, so the activities include recognizing kids for positive things that they are doing with attendance in school, notifying parents in different ways, lots of stuff along that line. The second thing that we do is we have weekly social media posts about attending school. They are already pre-created, so a principal just kind of clicks on the link, it takes them to the post, they just need to put it onto all their social media websites and get it out there, we want the word that kids need to be in school. This here is an example of one of the social media posts, you know, debunking attendance. It just gives information, so people know it's important to be at school. On top of our proactive attendance campaign, we have a process to address unexcused absences and excessively excused absences. For unexcused, first thing that happens is anytime we have an unexcused absence, there's an automatic phone call that goes out, I think it goes out at seven-thirty and four o'clock each day to notify parents, hey, your kid's not in school and they're not excused for it, so hopefully it prompts parents to call in or notify us, and if they get a note, now they know their kid's not in school. Part of our unexcused process is we have four very distinct intervention steps that have an increasing intensity of support. I'm going to walk you through those, and to stay on track of those four intervention steps, there's a weekly email that goes out to each building that identifies what kids have met the threshold for what intervention step, so we can stand on it. On top of the unexcused process, each building has an excessive excused process that is building-specific. The principals and their staff have identified this is what we consider excessively excused, and here's how we're going to handle it, a lot of buildings use like our step-two unexcused process for their excused, excessive excused process, so I'm going to walk you through that, so. Districts, here's our step-one policy, so when a kid reaches their third unexcused absence in a trimester, there's an automatic letter that goes out, that letter goes out in their home language, it says, hey, we noticed you're missing some school, it's unexcused, we are concerned about that, we want you to school, how can we support, that kind of stuff, it's just kind of a notification. With that letter goes an attendance report, so it shows what days were considered unexcused. You can see through our graphs, we have two years worth of data, blue being twenty-three, twenty-four, and orange being last year, twenty-four, twenty-five. And you can see over time, we have done a better job. There was an increase in the number of step points that went out, so right towards the end of the year. Now, this is not the number of students, this is the number of letters. So there are a large number of students who receive a step-one letter each trimester. So they're counted multiple times, but this is just the number of letters. When you look at the graphs on this one and on the building slides, please make sure to pay attention to the scale, so you can see the step-one by grade is up to a hundred and twenty, on the step-one by month, it goes up to two fifty, so just pay attention to those scales as you go through. Now, if a kid has reached five unexcused absences in a trimester, our next thing that we do is we call home and we call exactly, we talk to parents. This can be done by the system principal, or it can be done by the attendance secretary, each building has somebody identified to do that. They call and they say, hey, we noticed that there's unexcused absences, how can we help, is there barriers in the way that we can reduce? So if things happen at school, we do a problem-solving conversation and enact a plan so the kids can come to school. Then we follow that up with an email stating what we did, and in that email, we have an attendance report. So you can see our statistics here, you guys have this, so I'm sure you have more time to check it out, but it is by month that we have this. If you look towards the end of the year, step-two by month, well, definitely, we are doing better than we were before, so there's less kids getting step-twos. Our step-three process, so when kids reach their seventh unexcused absence in a trimester, that's when we call, we set up a conference, parents come in with their kid, they sit with the building administrator, and they go through a process of trying to problem-solve what's hindering the kid from getting to school, and how can we make sure if they're absent, it gets excused, all that process. We got a problem-solving process, develop a plan, they put it in place, and then we move on, so you can see how many of the step-threes that we've had. This is quite a bit of work for the system principal to have all those meetings. However, they are super important because if the kid's not there, the kid's not learning. Step four, when a kid reaches ten unexcused absences in a trimester, so basically, they've exhausted all their absences they can, every absence passed up is going to be considered chronically unexcused. Then we have to take action, we file a backup petition that goes to the county, goes to Mason County Courts. Then they shoot off a letter and we end up having a meeting, what's called a Community Engagement Board Meeting. We sit down with the family, the courts, and the kid, and we problem-solve in the building, we problem-solve what's going on, and they actually make a contract with the Mason County Court Representative about attending school. As long as they follow that contract, things are great. If they don't follow that contract, we notify the courts, and then the courts take over and there's often a court date, and the kids need to go there and explain what's going on, kids and family to the court. So that's our step, steps process. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Belfair, and they're going to walk through their building data, and they're going to kind of outline, not only the district process and what we do, but what they're doing on top of that. Each school, their goal is to reduce the number of step-twos, to reduce step-twos, they need to reduce their step-ones, and so it's all right there, trying to reach as much, many kids as possible when we reduce step-ones and step-twos, then obviously, we reduce step-threes and fours, so the game is going to be around step-ones and step-twos. So, I'm going to turn it over to the buildings at this moment in time, and once again, I apologize for not being there, have a good evening.
Good evening, everybody. In our presentation tonight, Christie's going to do the speaking, she's really our attendance person in the building. The first and foremost attendance person though is Alicia Covert, she's our MTSS Paraeducator, she does a magnificent job. She tracks the attendance of the children, she sends the letters to the families, and most times, she's the first phone call that goes out. If there's a situation where she feels not really comfortable doing that phone call, or she feels it would be better coming from us, she lets us know that right up front. So that we always work together as an MTSS team to decide how to handle those attendance cases that might need a little bit more than just a simple call. And so Christie's going to talk to you about some of the other things we're doing in our building.
So our goal is to reduce the number of step-twos by twenty percent, and so if you look over there at our step-two graph, there's only actually a two-person difference between the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, so we had two more last year. So we intend to decrease that. And then we can go on to the next slide, so our monitoring plan, so again, we work with our MTSS team and we collect our Skyword data, and we review that on a regular basis, so we review that monthly and on a case-by-case basis also, so we can connect with families and see what we need to do to step in and help. So our action plan is, and this was, this was arranged by our build team and agreed upon, that our teachers will contact our families after three days of unexcused absences, so they will go and they'll check in with the office. And if the office has not been able to connect with them, then they will be connecting with the families via Parents Square email or phone, whatever form of communication they feel most comfortable with. And when the student arrives back at school, they'll of course be welcomed back with open arms, and everybody's super excited to see them. So our number two is we celebrate attendance, we track it by grade level, and so then in our monthly celebrations, we have photos that are taken with the whole grade level that has the highest attendance, and we have a bulletin board, so that's put up on our bulletin board, and it will also be going out in our bulletin. And number three, we communicate the importance of the attendance goal, that's like Chris was talking about with those, that attendance campaign, so we're sending those messages out on Parents Square throughout the year and throughout the month. And then lastly, we communicate with families regarding our attendance policy, so that went out in our welcome packet. And again, that's something that we do when we see that families are starting to slip a little bit with their attendance, that's something that we always reiterate to families, so.
Do you have any questions for us?
I appreciate the positive interactions, I like that it is supportive rather than punitive when they come back.
They don't always have the choice. We're going to be on absent, so want to make sure they know they're wanted at school. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Sand Hill.
Good evening. So in our building, Tyler is our attendance guru, you can see our data here. We are working at reducing our step-twos by twenty percent this year. What we are learning from our experience is that though unexcused absences are a big concern, most of the time at the elementary level, that's usually a parent issue, and once we bring a parent in and say, hey, we have big concerns, you're not excusing these absences, or they'll say, well, they were sick, or all these things, they then learn the system a little bit, and they start calling and excusing. And so this year, we wanted to kind of up our game around excused absences, because we've noticed that that's usually where we're at. A lot of our kids are missing a lot of school, but parents are calling in and excusing that. So if you go to the next slide, Jackie. This kind of outlines our intervention plan, and it breaks it down on what we do daily, weekly, bi-weekly, and monthly to support our attendance. A lot of this plan is a little bit of ditto of what Belfair Elementary does and probably what a lot of the schools do, we do our campaign, we work with our our student study team to make sure that we highlight and bring to, bring to the front the kids that are missing a lot of school. We do a lot of, we do the process, we also celebrate attendance in our monthly awards assemblies, we are actually doing another. We are actually doing another layer of daily attendance for each specific classroom this year. So we're trying all the positive pieces too. But Tyler has here a flyer that we're sharing with our families around just bringing aware what it looks like for kids to miss school, and what is chronic absenteeism. And so we are sending this chart home. It's colorful. You want, you can talk about it.
Yeah, so, see, obviously, the district calendar on the back. We felt color was very important because color has meaning on this. But really what this is, is to give families a visual of just how many absences they might be encountering in their school year, and to give them an idea of what, you know, exemplary versus a chronic absence issue looks like. So this is going home to all of our families, and, I mean, we know that not all families will do it. However, we do think it'll help provide a visual of those who are experiencing this problem.
At Sand Hill, the culture there is wonderful around absences and parents calling in. We have a pre-excused absent form, and I fill out probably five or six a day. And those are families that are saying, we're going on vacation. We're going to do these, these things that are great. But if I assign one that's for five days, you're already into the chronically absence. Like, we want to make sure that they're aware how important school is. And even though we want to, you know, look at the whole child and make sure that we're supporting families, that a lot of times, it's due to just fun stuff that they're missing school to. We're not trying to be too hard, but we're trying to make them aware. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I love this, actually.
All right, Hawkins.
Good evening. First, I want to introduce our new assistant principal, Scott Davis, at our school. He's taken on the attendance role and positive behavior work in our school, which is starting with attendance this next, tomorrow, actually. We're having grade-level presentations. And part of that is handing out positivity awards for kids that have done some great things based on our character traits for social-emotional learning, and also the perfect attendance awards for our kids. And I think we had a difficulty today of doing certificates for those because there were too many for us all to sign. So we're trying to figure out how we do this with that many, which is really a good thing.
We had a hundred and seventy-five students with perfect attendance so far this year. And so a lot of that goes right into our work around the data. As you can see, from the previous year, twenty-three, twenty-four, to twenty-four, twenty-five, we had a reduction in the number of students who received step-one letters. But if you look at the other chart, it shows an increase in the number of step-one letters going out, which means that most of those kids that are getting step-one letters are getting them each trimester. And so it's a chronic issue, attendance piece, that's showing up in this data. And with the step-two, you see something very similar. Again, reduction in the number of kids that are receiving the step-two letters, but an increase in the number, although this is a little deceptive with the graph because it's increased from one oh five to one oh nine, it's only four increase. But it shows, again, that level of chronic issues. When we take it to the step-three and step-four from the data, you're going to see that we, again, reduce the number of kids that were receiving those. So the work that we did last year was really helping in communicating the need for them to address the unexcused absences. Our work this year is to not just work on the unexcused, but also to have a heavy emphasis that even with excused absences, missing school is not okay. So one of the things we do is every month, we review our attendance data, both excused and unexcused with our built ownership team. And our MTSS team is, meets once a month to discuss what, kind of, where those high-flyer pieces, especially with the excused absences, are that we can work with on a case-by-case basis and develop maybe some interventions for them to help them be at school more often. Like I told you earlier, we're doing our monthly recognition assemblies for students that exemplary attendance right now. We're also looking at trying to improve the tardies at school so that we can reward kids for no tardies on a regular basis, and making sure that we reset that every month. So if a kid missed a day in September, but then really didn't miss anything in October, we want to recognize them for having a perfect attendance in October. The, once we get these recognitions going, we're going to be inviting the parents in so that they can be part of that recognition with their kids to develop more community engagement with their parents. The home ground communication has been something that we regularly did last year through our morning announcements, or our weekly announcements in our videos, and we're continuing doing that this year, putting them in our messages out, newsletters out to the parents. And then we want to make sure, one emphasis, especially with our PBIS program this year, is to help students make, feel welcomed on a just a daily basis, making sure that kids are getting good greetings when they come in. Even if they're coming in late to school, it's not, why were you absent? It's like, hey, I'm so glad you made it here today. We're glad to see you. Let's help you get what you need. And trying to get to that point of that five-to-one balance, or that five positives for any one negative that's being mentioned with a kid at all at school, so they feel good about being there. We just know if they have a warm, happy place to be, somewhere where they feel welcome, they're more likely to come to school every day. Any questions?
I do, just, you had explained this, but I didn't catch or understand on the graphs for either step-one or step-two. So why doesn't the orange, like, on the right, match?
You know, that's a great question. I asked that myself because it didn't make sense to me. But on the right-hand side, what I was informed is that that is the number of students that received step-two letters. And on the left-hand side, those are the number of letters that went out.
Okay.
And so that means that several of the kids received multiple letters.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, North Mason High School.
Good evening, board. Thanks for having us. Steve oversees our attendance program at North Mason High School, and I'm going to turn the presentation over to him.
Yeah, similar to what all the other schools have said, but we'll still take a look through. The one thing I do want to point with our data on this is you'll see the sophomores really high on both of our step-one and step-two. It's not because our sophomores are, you know, feral or anything like that. It's a, it's a really big class. Normally, our class would be like a hundred and seventy kids. That's a two-twenty-plus class. So that's, that's the reason it's so much higher. You'll see it also decreases a lot. But that is, you'll see the numbers are going the right way. But our sophomore class last year, so this year's juniors is a really big class. And that's why the number looks so much higher there. If you go through, go ahead, Jackie. Go ahead. Yep. So take attendance every day. Like everyone is saying, it's, it's hard sometimes to change some habits by the time they get to high school, but if you make it a place they want to be, and they feel warm and welcome, there's a better chance they're gonna, going to get there, especially when they can drive and they have other options sometimes to get to school. So it's important when you see them walk in the door, everyone, hey, I didn't see yesterday. Great, welcome back. Just make it a place they want to be at. Something we're working really hard on with that. And then explaining the importance to families. School-wide support, the discipline, I'm sorry, the attendance data is something we bring monthly to our built meeting, just like our discipline data. We bring all of that, it's something our whole department, we look it over and see, okay, why are we seeing arrays here, what's going on? And so that's something we are looking at monthly, and then try to figure out what can we do? If we need some check-ins, sometimes that's all it is, is just finding a kid, and I'm going to find you every single day and say hi to you. I have a girl right now that you are going to get to fifth period math, and I'm going to, every single day, just track you down on that. And that's, sometimes that's all, all it takes, is someone just, they know someone cares. And then we also have the awards for attendance that we give out every trimester that we're working on there. Last year, we talked about like some of the awards, you know, our lunch lines, sometimes can get a little long. So if you get the attendance award, we'll draw some names out, and you get a free pass to the front of the line. Make it something the kids want. Doesn't cost any money, you get to the front of lunch line, but, you know, show up and you get your cheese zombie first. That's a, that's a good day. So thank you. Any, any questions for us?
About what percentage of our eleventh and twelfth grade is doing running start? Do you know?
Percentage? We can get you the exact number tomorrow morning.
Oh, it's going to be easier to get percentage than exact number, but, yeah, I was just curious because we don't, we don't have that information, right? I mean, that's between the student and OC. Whether or not we have problems with attendance there. Like, even the parents can't access that information.
Yeah.
Altogether, both grades? Thank you.
About seventy-three.
And we're going to talk next month with our presentation on how we're trying to bring, keep more of those kids on campus.
Yes, you and every other high school in the state. Yes, thank you. I'm looking forward to that one.
Thanks, guys. All right, James Taylor.
Last but not least. I think I'll start off by introducing myself. I think I'm the new guy. I'm Travis Quinn. I'm the principal down at James Taylor and the CT director. So for James Taylor, our big shift that we wanted to do this year was we took a big change in how we're tracking attendance that they've done in the years past. I think it's important to kind of highlight that I'm learning that James Taylor is unique in a lot of different aspects, and his attendance is another component where we're unique. For ALE compliance, attendance is really measured by weekly contact. So it's a combination of kids making progress in their courses, but also having that weekly contact with their teacher. And weekly contact is pretty flexible as far as whether it's an in-person meeting or an over-the-phone conversation or exchange via email or Microsoft Teams, but it's got to be between the teacher and the student. It's nice that it's flexible, but also it's, it's pretty impactful when a student misses that weekly contact. When a student misses that, it counts as five days of unexcused absences. And so that can really impact data, as well as a student's success in a course. Thank you, Jackie. So we kind of have two different hats. For the HomeLink, our teachers do an awesome job of being really flexible in how they approach weekly contact. They have digital logs, and they're constantly tracking when they meet with kids. And a lot of the times, they're doing contact multiple times throughout the week and stuff. The one-week contact is just a minimum. They do an excellent job of talking daily to a lot of kids and a lot of families. They reach out pretty much immediately whenever they miss a meeting, if they do miss that. And then they've been doing an awesome job of every Wednesday, running in-person learning that's open to all of their HomeLink students for some hands-on learning, and also for that in-person meeting, so they can make that connection with their teacher. For James Taylor, it's kind of a shift in attendance practice in past years because we've implemented our mastery-based learning courses, which is where we're doing our project-based learning. We've been able to align with the high school and middle school and start tracking attendance in Skyward. It's really nice, especially on my end, because it's easier to kind of collect and analyze the data, identify students that are having struggles with attendance. We can kind of, as our built team, review that data and see whether or not any of our interventions are being effective or not. So that's, that's been our biggest change this year. And then it's way easier when we're using that data to track which students need earlier interventions. So that's our big move there. Questions?
I don't have a question, but I have to say that this year, my son's in his second year there at James Taylor, and he feels more excited this year. And I asked him, it was because he knows what's going on now, and he feels like he's got one up on the people before him, you know, coming in now. And he's like, it's a little bit different. He feels like it's recently a little bit different. So whatever you're bringing, he's, he's excited. He loves being there.
Awesome. Happy to hear that.
He's got a few new friends in there that have come through, like, from elementary up with him. So it's been pretty cool, so.
Well, it's happy to hear he's feeling that way.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to say thank you to all our principals. I feel very grateful that we have an administrative team who understands how important it is to have a good culture for students, and that that sense of belonging is what gets them to school. And without being at school, they can't do the learning. So I appreciate how positive they are with their interactions and trying to create that culture where students want to be here every day. I am going to ask that we excuse the building principals at the break so that they could head home. Pace themselves for four more days with kiddos, so. But we have a great budget status report. Which one did we? So, okay, oh, so I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see that that was, so, okay. So the question was back in letter A, where there was the transportation letter of achievement, there is also a link to the minimum basic education requirement collection. My understanding is that it's been shared with the board each year. It's a compliance action that has to be completed by the superintendent each year. And so it was a look back on last year's meeting of basic requirements. It's actually a very, very long survey. It had some new components to it around the changes in graduation requirements. It's really there just as a, as an FYI, showing you that we did complete the needed requirements through the state. But unless there's specific questions, I wasn't going to go through it because it is a very, very long document.
I had a couple of questions. Do we know if we have students that need assistance with paying for AP exams or ACTs or ACTs, and that's one of the graduation pathways?
That is a question that I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I can find out the answer for you. Unless there is an answer already from the...
We do.
Okay. That we have a way to help people who might need assistance.
Okay. And which tribe do we partner with for our time immemorial curriculum?
Skokomish.
Skokomish? Thank you.
I'm going to make a suggestion that we, are you done with that?
Unless, unless you would like to?
No. I'm going to make a suggestion to move the five-minute recess to now before Dan gets into his budget review. All in favor of doing that?
Aye.
We will stand at recess for five minutes. We'll be back in here at seven-twenty.
Thank you.
Seven-twenty-one.
Let's back to order.
It's still ten-thirty, so they were like, going to come here now. So now my son wants to be there, so. Yeah, it was really cool. Oh, he was asking about running.
All right.
Position. Oh, are we still?
We're back.
I heard a knock-knock, but I wasn't, I was like, who's there?
All right. Dan, let's get the budget status report going here.
Okay, well, good evening, board. I'm Dan King, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. And I have our budget status report with our budget through August thirty-first, 2025. So this shows a summary of our general fund on the front page here. So for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, we budgeted forty-four million, nineteen thousand, eight forty-two in revenues. And you can see on the table here, year-to-date, where it's bolded for August at the bottom, for revenues. Through August, our revenues amounted to forty-three million, seven hundred, one thousand, eight hundred, seventy-three dollars. So we didn't meet that mark of forty-four million. However, the forty-four million, nineteen thousand, eight forty-two was the original budget that we approved in August of twenty-four, before we had a realization that we had seventy-six fewer students than we budgeted for. So with that in mind, and our revenue came in at three hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred, sixty-nine dollars less than what we budgeted, I think we did pretty good. Because when I calculated the revenue difference, when we made that adjustment to our portionment, it was one-point-three million dollars. So we made up for it in other ways. We had budgeted forty-four million, five hundred, twenty-four thousand, three hundred, seven in expenditures. And our year-to-date through August was forty-three million, two hundred, five thousand, three fifty-five. So our expenditures came in at one million, three hundred, eighteen thousand, nine hundred, fifty-two dollars below what we budgeted. So this shows that we exceeded our projection in terms of with that reduction of seventy-six students in revenues, and we did better with our expenditures than what we had originally planned. For those reasons, our fund balance ended higher, actually, than we budgeted. At the top, you can see our budgeted ending fund balance was two million, two hundred, four thousand, four ninety-one. That's what we planned, August of 2024. And flash forward to August thirty-first of 2025, and you can see our fund balance was two million, six hundred, seventy-eight thousand, three ninety-one. So we did, we made up for some of the challenges with our budget with that reduced enrollment, being strategic with our... being strategic with our spending, cutting costs, being very careful to, um, not refill positions that vacated mid-year or to refill them in a different way. We were very careful with spending on some of our, um, regular costs, like bringing our utility costs down by screening our bills and seeing if we needed to make adjustments and things like that. We worked really hard to think of ways we could, um, keep our general fund fund balance as high as possible. And it did pay off. Now, this is a snapshot as of August thirty-first. We are, we still have not closed out the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. We're still in the year-end process. And we're working on our financial report, our F-196. And we won't be done with that until mid-November. What I anticipate seeing is a slight increase in our fund balance due to revenue accruals. What that is, is, uh, we're still doing some grant reconciliations and putting in claims for costs that occurred in twenty-four, twenty-five that we can get reimbursed for. And so an example was I just did grant claims on September fifteenth that amounted to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that two hundred and thirty thousand dollars will be accrued to twenty-four, twenty-five. There could also be some adjustments, um, that subtract from the fund balance as well. But I do anticipate in the end that our fund balance will be around two point eight million. I'll be sharing that during our November board meeting when I do a recap of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, um, in our F-196, which is our twenty-four, twenty-five financial report. The next page, I put a graphic in here just to show kind of visually the big picture of our general fund uh, through, uh, from September through August. So you can kind of see our year-to-date revenues and expenditures increasing as the year went on and our fund balance and how that changed. And largely that's based on our portionment because our expenditures and revenues are pretty consistent, what our average, um, amounts are. Our average monthly expenditures are three million, six hundred, forty-four thousand, six twenty-eight. That that was the average in twenty-four, twenty-five. So a little over three point six million. And our average monthly revenues were three million, six hundred, fifty-four thousand, five twenty-eight. So really, there's only a ten thousand dollar difference between those averages with the revenues being slightly higher. Those are pretty stable and consistent. It's our portionment that varies throughout the year. And you can see that in that in that chart, that, um, month-end fund balance, uh, is fluctuating mostly based on, if you can scroll down a little more, Jackie. Uh, you can see it here on the table, too. Our, um, oh, no, I'm sorry. Go up, right, yeah, right there. You can see that third bar in each month. And don't ask me to color. I'm colorblind. Um, maybe it's orange. That's a guess. The little one on the right. Um, you can see how that changes. And if you look at January, for example, it was very low. And although it's a much smaller amount of money than our, um, revenues and expenditures, it shows a percentage, our fund balance as a percentage of our budgeted expenditures. And as you know, we have a general fund, fund balance, uh, policy that we maintain a fund balance between eight and ten percent of our budgeted expenditures. And it's been discussed before that, um, we've had some challenges in twenty-four, twenty-five where it's dipped below that. And in January, it was well below, just about two point five percent. Well, I'm happy to say that we're ending the year at six percent at this point, and it should be slightly higher in November when I report to you. We're still not where we need to be, but we're also not done making adjustments and, uh, working on increasing that fund balance. And also just for the, anyone watching, um, to note that the board had approved a temporary fund balance, um, policy of being at six percent for twenty-four, twenty-five, ending the year there. So we're meeting that. Now moving on to the other funds. So our four other funds include the Capital Projects Fund, and that one had a fund balance at the end of August of one hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred, sixty-four dollars. The Debt Service Fund ended with two million, three hundred, fifty-four thousand, one hundred, thirteen dollars. The ASB, three hundred, seventy-six thousand, five hundred, ninety-five dollars. And Transportation Vehicle Fund ended with four hundred, seventy-six thousand, three hundred, forty-seven. You probably won't see much change in these fund balances as I go through the year-end because there really isn't any opportunity to accrue revenues in these areas. Um, there there, I think we'll see some adjustments as we do some reconciliations, but not as significant as we'll see in the general fund. Moving on to the enrollment report. Now, the enrollment report is our September count, our September enrollment, which historically is usually low compared to October. And this count shows what we budgeted as well as the actual count for September. But it only includes our K-12 regular FTE. It does not include TTK, DPS, or Running Start. We had budgeted two thousand, two hundred, twenty-seven students. And our September count shows two thousand, one hundred, sixty point nine seven. It's low. And we've seen it low in September before, so we don't want to feel too concerned at this point. However, it's the October count in which we really need to analyze where we are. And if if we need to, we would make an adjustment to our portionment so that we're not overpaid. Because if we're overpaid based on enrollment, we have to owe that back starting in January. We don't want to do that. So.
Dan, is the budgeted, is that even the budgeted number K-12 only, or do we budget for?
K-12 only.
K-12, okay.
Yes, yes. Now, our Running Start, we budgeted seventy, I believe, and we have seventy-three. That's good. Uh, it could still go up. TTK, we do get a portionment for TTK. We have a limit, though, on how many students, um, we can receive a portionment for. It's based on last year's high of thirty-four. And so that's our target, thirty-four. If we get thirty-six, then we wouldn't be receiving the extra portionment for those two extra students. So, um, it's yet to be determined how many, uh, TTK students we have. So next month is, our enrollment will be really important, um, the October, the October count, which I'll be reporting in our October board. Are there any other questions?
Do we feel like with the enrollment numbers, um, which schools, do we know which, I'm sure we know, but do you have that information? Which schools are trending low, lower than anticipated?
Yes, um, great question. Thank you for asking. I meant to share that. So, you know, with our classroom, brick and mortar attendance, um, we're pretty close to what we budgeted in terms of, uh, students attending. It's our ALE, which is both Home, HomeLink and James Taylor where we're down.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I feel like the elementary schools are bursting.
Elementary, so elementary is about twenty-six students higher than what we budgeted.
Yeah, lots of shuffling happening.
Six twelve, about twenty-something lower. Hmm, maybe that might, I'd have to have it in front of me. I don't think it's that much lower. But we're lower in the secondary. We're higher in the elementary. And if the ALE were especially lower than.
That's interesting.
And we had budgeted down. We had expected less in HomeLink, but it's even lower than we anticipated. Now, could that change? Certainly, certainly. Uh, so I think we want to see where we are in October and then we'll really know, you know, what we're dealing with and make adjustments.
Very good.
Very curious.
And before Dan goes, because I'm thinking he might need to add some clarification for this. So I know that one of the questions I've received recently is, um, if the district has had to make, uh, cuts to the teaching staff in the past, how can you afford to be adding two kindergarten teachers at this point of the year? And it is extremely complicated the way that, um, Washington funds, um, K-three based on class size. And so you watch it very, very closely because there is this magic tipping point where if you don't add a teacher, you will actually lose funding. And that's where we ended up at both Belfair and Sand Hill. It's certainly not ideal for, um, the school, the families, the kiddos to have to be making this change mid-year. But the district, uh, was in a place where we would lose a great deal of money if we didn't make that, those two additional teachers, so.
Yes.
One, was it one each at both schools, one kindergarten?
Yep.
And then some shuffling with like third grade?
Yes, and a little, in a week or so before that, we'd had to do the same thing in third grade at, um, Belfair.
Yeah.
So, and those are the areas. Where at the elementary we were high was kindergarten, which is really, you know, interesting because last year we were really low in kindergarten. And then this year we're, and we we planned on an increase, but it was a lot more than what we planned. And, um, Dr. Michael's absolutely correct about the K-three cast, class size allocation is, um, the the formula is based on a class size of seventeen. And you can include some of your specialists in that as well. But you're penalized if you're too high and you actually lose a portionment. And so there is that threshold where it's like, okay. We actually, um, would lose money if we don't hire another teacher.
Yeah.
And we do look at, do we just move people around? But again, elementary was pretty much spot-on at all the other grade levels, what we budgeted for, and we had the right number of teachers. But the kindergarten was much higher than we planned. So we looked at all the numbers, uh, we did all the math, and we figured out we would actually lose money and funding by keeping our class sizes too high at the primary levels. Thus, we, um, brought in additional kindergarten teachers at each elementary.
And I assume like as we move into October and like the numbers settle and we know where we're at, that is there like an analysis piece as to, you know, where we think those numbers came from? Or like if some were families coming back from maybe homeschooling and that type of thing? Do we look at that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We try to look at every single data source we have to try to figure out why we had this anomaly of low last year compared to higher than predicted for this year.
And I assume the the disparity in that, a lot of those were late registrations or kind of right as school started for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll also maybe be taking a look at what efforts we can make as a district to try to encourage families earlier in the spring and summer to really get in here and get registered so that we can plan prior to the year starting. And we know it's it's hard because a lot of families have Labor Day as that magic start date is, that's when they start thinking about school, especially if it's their, um, first child to be going to school. But we can work proactively to to try to make sure that we're messaging and reaching out to local preschools and families and churches and such to try to get more families to register earlier.
Thank you, Dan.
Really interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dan. All right. Moving on to the organizational performance and policy review.
Do we have a ledge rep?
Oh, yeah, we got the ledge rep. I, thanks. My brain's fried from sitting on the bucket.
I know, I was looking for it.
I was, and Leanna was in there, um, at the WASDA thing. You want to give us an update on that?
Yeah, I was gonna, did, were your, your, did you have anything before that?
No, no.
Okay. Um, so the General Assembly every year, um, is basically the, um, the annual event, uh, that Washington State Directors gather to review and vote on revisions to the WASDA Legislative and Advocacy Platform. So that, I had to write this down because the words that were gonna come out of my mouth doesn't sound like this, so. Um, association remains relevant and effective for advocating for schools and students. Um, this year was, it kind of started off pretty slow. Everybody was kind of on track. It was a little fifty-fifty, uh, pretty good. Good topics. Um, a lot, they do a lot of consolidating into one, uh, making, so there's not like ten million different things. They put sometimes seven into one, um, for, uh, different policies and whatnot. But I felt like this year, so the first time that they did it on Zoom was during COVID. And now they do it every year, um, and you don't have to be there. And actually, this one, uh, the assembly, actually, I believe it's only on Zoom. I don't think, a lot of people can get together. But, um, there's, politics is starting to weigh heavy on people, I think. Um, and where I saw a lot of confusion in a few things where people were, I felt like some people didn't understand what it was asking right away. But then later on, I was realizing that it's a lot of the perception has, it's just depending where people are coming from and what, the way they see it. Um, so when I was like, oh, yeah, we'll all vote pro on this, you know, and then I'm sitting here watching and, and it was con. Eighty-five percent. And a lot of people were like, what the heck just happened? And we were like, oh, and but everybody's like, oh, this guy gets on there and goes, I don't know, I don't remember names, so I'm not gonna quote people perfectly here, but he, um, he was like, well, I think so-and-so was confused. And I'm like, oh, that's dangerous. You know, like maybe not saying that, you know, and he's like, I think they were confused because of this. But then she came back on and said, no, I wasn't confused. This is why I voted that way. So it was, uh, it was a perception thing. So it was nice to kind of wa, I mean, you're watching people like a button, a skillet, and they're like, yeah. They want to say something, but I really appreciate, um, the way that everybody comes together and, um, kind of puts a lot of their biases aside. But by the end, it kind of gets a little heavy on both sides. But there's a lot of really great topics. I did write them all down, but I didn't get the, I didn't record the outcomes on each one. And I can do that and like send it to you guys. Um, but a lot of, this is a lot of work, um, that, to put it together, um, the consolidation of the policies and, um, and, uh, and what they do is, um, well, you have to read it and you have to weigh it out. And it's just, it's really neat. It's really neat to be able to do this. And it's kind of a step. A lot of people ask what WASDA is. And I'm kind of like, well, OSPI does this and school boards do this. And then WASDA is kind of that, that buffering ground that kind of helps bring in, I don't even know how to, probably not gonna explain it the right way, but, um, WASDA kind of helps us out as board members, um, but also.
WASDA helps to like interpret.
Yeah.
OSPI and, you know, filters it down for school board members to understand and provides the training and that
advocacy platform so that we can advocate in an effective way. I didn't have anything prepared because I was asked the night before if I would, um, they didn't know if anybody was registered because you have to register your name and make sure that we're in there, um, before, uh, anybody on the board can come and watch. And anybody can talk, but only one person on your board at a time can be a voting delegate. Now, you can take two people on your board and and hand it off to each other. I did it by myself, uh, during the COVID time. So this one, it, I think it kind of snuck up on us a little bit. I was kind of like, when does that come up? And then I, I didn't hear it. And then Terry Tate from the, uh, the Legislative Committee, he had called a lot of people and he asked if I was interested on being on the committee. And I'm like, yeah, actually, I am on the Legislative Committee. And so I put my name in. Um, so I'm running, so if anyone wants to vote for me. But I don't know if anybody's running against me, so if you don't want to vote for me, I don't know if it matters. Yeah, but I all have better information and have that better put together. But I was asked the night before. Um, but if you don't know what you're doing, they kind of explain it to you. But then by the middle, you're kind of like hands-off and you're pro-con. And sometimes they'll help you out if you don't understand something completely. Your team, um, they kind of help you out in understanding it. But, um, it's a lot of fun. It's it's a little heated and you kind of have to put your pink cheeks aside sometimes and go, okay, okay. But it's a neat experience and I I'm excited to share more when I have better words to say about it.
Well, thank you for taking that on.
Oh, thank you for giving me that opportunity, too. I, I'm glad I got ahold of you and.
No, yeah, because I was neck-deep in. No, yeah, cuz I was neck deep in some other.
College stuff is a big deal, yeah.
Um, okay, very good. Well, now we will move on to the monitoring reports. So I will entertain a motion to find the superintendent compliance of ER six facilities.
Um I'll find the the superintendent's performance to comply with ER six.
Okay, any discussion?
I will say I'm looking forward to uh the bond and improvements and when we had the smoke there in Belfair. Being at Belfair Elementary was a stark reminder of, oh, we have air conditioners that are, are not air conditioners, just. Air movement pulling it straight from outside into the classrooms.
Yeah.
And uh so, yeah, I think.
There's another, there's another hit piece right there.
Yeah.
Um I I really appreciate the uh monitoring report and the detail. Um that's in there that you went into. And I really like your reflection piece that you added in there as well. That was really nice, really nice addition there.
Thank you, so we're just kind of in still in transition phase where we're reflecting on last year uh and the facilities and the work that um. Mr. Rosenbach was doing, um but yet I'm learning the the process and and looking for ways to make improvements, so you can see that. On the facility one, um I just included the reflection at the bottom, whereas on the asset protection one. I provided some additional information just about my interpretation of of that governance policy and. And what I think it will look like going forward for us.
I just love the fact that you're bringing your piece to it, it's it's great. Okay, all in favor of finding the superintendent in compliance of ER six facilities signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, I'll entertain a motion to find the superintendent compliance of ER seven, asset protection.
I move that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER seven.
Any discussion there? Any comments on your side?
No, I think that um that these two go hand in hand, the asset protection and the. Preventative maintenance along with our facility uh update that you heard from from Mrs. Moore. Um there are certainly opportunities for Mr. King and I to continue to learn to to work together and work through our. Our inventory systems and our liabilities um and ensure that we're really taking the best care we possibly can with our. Um physical inventory, buildings, et cetera, but um. No, I I appreciate all the work that's gone in in the past with the the district and the entire team and. Um appreciate that there is uh so much detail that had already been provided prior to me starting.
Perfect. All right, all in favor of finding the superintendent in compliance of ER seven signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So now to the policy review, is there any discussion we want to have on ER one? Expectations of the superintendent, these are ones we went through the last board meeting. Is there any discussion on ER three? All right, and ER four? Okay, moving on to the adjournment here. So monthly study session proposal, Nicole, do you want to talk to that one?
Yes, yeah. So this is something that I was thinking about bringing to our retreat. Um but we ended up canceling that and so Eric and Christine and I spoke about the need for the board to meet. In addition to a board meeting, like we come in, you know, right at six thirty, sometimes we come in at six or five thirty if something has come up. But it seems a little difficult to have. Conversations with more than two of us about policies or some situation that has come up and. Obviously, we can have conversations, two of us to uh prevent a quorum, but sometimes. I'd like to review, actually sit down and review a policy and discuss it and ask questions and. Possibly bring in a subject matter expert on that policy. And so it was my hope that we could meet once a month for a study session. And ahead of time, we would decide maybe for the next few months or the entire school year, what we would discuss at each. Study session and if it turns out we don't have anything to discuss during this study session, great, we cancel it. But if we could have a standing kind of bookmark, like the second Monday of the month. Um I think this would allow all of us to start fresh, we have a new superintendent. Um start fresh with educating ourselves um and each other and the ability to go a little more in depth. On things, sometimes something comes up on an agenda and I might email ahead of time or. Um I don't think of it until it's presented and then I feel rushed in having to make a decision or vote on something. So that was my proposal uh that I presented to Christine and Eric and was hoping that we could. Uh speaking of voting last minute, uh hoping we could vote on it tonight.
It's, I I think like things like the district mission, it hasn't been rewritten in over ten years. Um is bring things like that so we can have a little breakout session. And kind of really hammer a lot of that out since we are starting fresh um with Christine being here. Um and kind of get those things and kind of get through. Some of the policies that really have more than just, you know, sitting here and. Talking in a small section, be able to deeper dive into, you know, a specific. Policy and we can sit there and talk around it and, you know, like I said, bring experts or ask experts to come in and. Um discuss this, we really can kind of change. And update some of the verbiage in these and really understand where they're at. You know, with not only our is the board's input, but Christine's input as well as being, you know, new. In the district and maybe there's ideas that one of us come up with that may improve something, so. That's the thought, thoughts?
Would it, go ahead. Um would it be useful if we um, like if we vote to do it, that we each. Maybe come up with three or five uh topic ideas and shoot them your guys' way to. We might probably have some of the same ones, but.
I think, I think just understanding what. Things we want to discuss, I think the district mission, I think probably is number one. Um right now, because I think we're starting a new school year and. A new direction here and I think that is gonna be the basis of a lot of the other policies, right? Is that what what's our vision, what's our, you know, goal, where are we headed? And then we really, I think from that, is maybe have that as our first little study session and then. At the end of that study session, hey, what are the other things we want to talk about and decide that for what the next one's gonna be?
Yeah, and just to be clear for people who may be watching who um have questions is, study sessions, we don't take any action. So it's merely conversation or learning, um and if something were to come up, like let's say the. The mission that we need to take action on, then we would bring that to the next board meeting.
Yep.
And.
Lot of discussion.
Yeah. I think we talked about it, um I'm sorry, you were starting.
You you took that confession.
Um, I think we mentioned it before that when we were going to have a new board member coming on. Um that we uh talked about board flow and how the board works and it's good to um. Have Dr. Michael hear that too and us be able to hear it too and it's always good to hear, I guess, every.
I was just gonna make the comment with the mission statement, I feel like that goes hand in hand with just strategic visioning. In general, which we did start that process with study sessions a year ago. And I sort of would, if we're gonna, I want us to pick that back up, I've I've been wanting that, but I, you know, hesitate for us to start over. We had done a lot of surveys and stuff like that, but I'm not sure like where that all went, you know? So just to in keep keeping that in mind, we kind of adopted that a hundred percent sort of mentality. So I just wouldn't want us to start whole, you know, fresh over, but.
No, and I think some of the stuff that we did when we were going through the superintendent hiring process and some of that data.
Yeah.
That we still have, I think some of that, right, is absolutely things we need to bring in there because we heard that back from staff.
Yeah.
The public and what have you.
I definitely, yeah, because I think it's a robust process and I just would. I would want us to kickstart with what we've already been doing or had been doing and not. Putting more onto the plate of, you know, our voters who are about to see a levy and about to see a bond and.
Yeah.
You know, I don't really want to send them a bunch of surveys again, right, so.
But I think, I think, yeah, I think you're right, I think we've got a lot of the data and I think we've got a lot of the analysis and. It's really, I think, that's kind of Nicole's thing is get down and sit down and talk about it.
Yeah, and then my other comment was gonna be, are we going, we talked about when when the retreat didn't happen over the summer because of scheduling. We were gonna do sort of a mini one at the start of the school year here and then um naturally another one.
And that's kind of where we were thinking with this was really.
Okay.
Kind of have that as really a study session.
Have that as the bridge then.
You know, kind of a bridge on, because obviously when we get to December, right, we're gonna have a new board member. And I think that's when we start kicking off, right, the. Retreats to, you know, go through an education, but kind of use this as really a bridge to get us there.
Okay.
So. That makes sense, everybody like it?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Do we need to talk about timing and?
Timing, oh yeah, timing, so what do you guys, what what are his, your, what's everybody's thought and I know everybody has a busy schedule?
I, so earlier I said the second, and I, when I talked to Christine and Eric, I said the second Monday of the month just because I thought, oh, Mondays. Like I know with my work, I say Mondays, I can't work late because that's my North Mason time. Uh because sometimes we would have a study session or executive session or something on Monday nights. Um and I didn't want it to do it too close to a board meeting because what if we asked Christine, okay. Can you go back and collect this information and then we'll bring it to a board meeting and vote on it to give her some time and us some time? So that's why I suggested the second Monday of the month, but I don't know if if that works for people.
I like it being that second week, I don't love the Monday, but. That's just me.
Mondays are my, I run a food pantry in the morning, but the after, I always cut my Mondays out for nobody's. No time for anybody, but that I'm in town here, so I don't have any other things. So I'm good on any Monday, there's no extra doctor's appointments or anything like that for me.
Yeah, Mondays are kind of my only day that will work, the other days have. Either other commitments or other volunteer things that I do that would conflict, so.
I'm okay with Monday, the Monday, the thirteenth. Would be that second Monday.
October, you say?
Yes, October.
Perfect.
And I will say that Monday, I am at a school law conference, Monday and Tuesday of that week.
You're on what?
I'm at a school law conference.
Oh.
Um on the thirteenth and fourteenth, it's uh. Trying to think. But we also have kind of a weird long month of October or September has the five Mondays, so I'm wondering if. Just that once, maybe we could do it the the first Monday. Hmm, you said it wouldn't work though, besides.
I could be, yeah, um. I might, I may be late depending on where it goes, I'll just be here though, cuz I'll be here.
Well, what time are we thinking, cuz?
Yeah.
I mean.
What time, what time works? Throw some ideas out there.
Preferably not between five thirty to six thirty for me, but.
So six to like six thirty on? Six thirty works, six thirty works because I think the game, like tonight, the game was over, so I think I'll be fine. If we did it, so I'll be on the sixth of October.
Is the football games always on Monday here?
No, football games aren't.
My son is starting to attend because his best friend is on the, and I have to be. But he'll just be with me, he'll just be.
So we're saying maybe October sixth?
October sixth, does that work for everybody then?
Six thirty?
I can try to make it work.
I'm good either, wait.
Okay.
And does that work for your schedule?
Yeah, I'll make it work.
All right, so somebody needs to make a motion.
I pretty much wipe that.
As long as Jackie sends out an email, I'll make it work.
Yeah, actually, the Monday, the thirteenth is Columbus Day.
Oh yeah, that would work.
So we're not even.
Yeah, that didn't work anyways, so, so the sixth, so if somebody wants to make a motion.
So we are, I, are we, do it, let me see if I say this right, I move that we. Have our board meeting study sessions the second Monday of every month. And the, except for this next one, we're going to have a week early uh due to the day. Multiple reasons.
Okay, yeah.
I'm moving to second Mondays. Unless we choose a different day in there to move it, but that's the date's gonna be set, does that make sense?
November second Monday is November tenth is no school for uh teachers or students.
Uh, okay, well, can we do, still do it?
It's a, so you guys have the tenth and eleventh off?
The teachers do.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, and the kids.
So it's still open?
I think just put it, I think if we make it for that second Monday right now and then if we need to, like we said, if we need a adjust fire, we can adjust fire.
Yeah.
Cause we may not need to have like teachers and other staff there, it's just really for us to chat.
Is the WASDA conference on the twentieth or the nineteenth?
I think it's the twentieth.
Twenty through the twenty-second.
All right.
I think there was an early Monday.
Should we do all in favor of having the study session on the sixth at six thirty P M and. Tentatively scheduling a study session on the second weekend, week of the month. Um as needed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, there it is. Okay, Jackie, is there any other public comment? All right, so on to the good of the order. Start down there, Arla.
Um I've just been busy with the PTA at Belfair Elementary, um Fall Festival is October eighteenth. If you would like to volunteer to hand out pizza like Dr. Michael will be doing, um please let me know and you should start. Hearing about it soon.
October eighteenth?
October eighteen, five thirty to eight at Belfair Elementary.
What was the title of that?
It's the Fall Festival.
Fall Festival, okay.
Yeah. You said at five thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, I'm in November, that's why I'm like, what the heck? Saturday, okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, coincidentally, I am also running for a WASDA position for the. Washington Interscholastic Activities Association. Um and then other than that, I just wanted to commend the. School just in general for last Friday night's slash Saturday game. To see the way the teams came together and they were able to work together to do that. The band was awesome, even though they had a lot of their folks that couldn't make it, they still were there to support and have a good activity. There was an incredibly handsome man that was standing outside, sharing information about the levy, it was just a good experience.
That's so cool.
So, I love it.
And I will say like uh Mr. Thomas, our athletic. And I will say like, uh, Mr. Thomas, our athletic director, uh, I think he, he had made sixty, over sixty phone calls. In between like twelve thirty and that evening, like just trying to make the best decision for the, for our kids. But also communicate with all the officials, the EMT, the other team and, and we appreciate that Port Angeles was willing to. Come down on Saturday. It was a, it was a beautiful day.
I was on the phone with him.
It was a pretty good game too.
Yeah, love it. Well, uh, other than this last meeting that I missed for the levy meeting, um, because they, it got moved. Uh, I think we didn't do our normal Wednesday, right? I think it moved from that. Um, but I, watching the, the people in that room with the confidence. Um, and just working together and I just see fire in that room, just, and not just because we're at the fire department, you know? Sitting in the room, but you know, just, everybody's just really excited and I have been watching our Facebook. Um, not just our Facebook, but every Facebook uh, post about the good and the bad. And I get to kind of see it come through the Belfair network, but I don't touch those, so Troy um, puts those up. Those are not my um, fingers in there, but I do get to see it when it comes to that. And I noticed that our community has um, been coming to the rescue. They are like, then some of the. The old thinking on levy and bond and just new taxes or continuing taxes. Um, that a lot of the community is like, hey, it's time, you know, it's time to take care of our own, you know? So I'm, I'm seeing a lot of those words out there and I really appreciate, um, it's feeling very. Family oriented again in Belfair and I'm loving the upturn of it.
Nicole?
Um, so I attended a, a School Directors of Color Caucus meeting. And they were basically reviewing the General Assembly Handbook and going through. Um, some of the proposals and stances that WASDA was going to take on the different. Issues, um, and so it was really great to hear it from that point of view. And also thinking not just intent, but impact on a lot of our student populations, so. Um, I think they'll, they meet every once in a while, right, Arla?
Yeah, it's not.
Once a quarter or something, um, but it was, it was a good networking opportunity. Um, and we had some districts close to us like Bremerton representing and one of the Kitsaps, so. Um, I went and saw uh, most of our varsity volleyball team. Play um, against Bremerton and they did, um, they did really well and it's always great to see our student section. Um, in that gym, always just cheering on the girls and they always pick a player from the opposing team to cheer on as well. They'll just pick someone that they're just like, yes, that person's amazing and they'll cheer for that opposing team player, so that's really cool. Um, and then I also saw part of a girl soccer game. I could not stay for the whole thing. Um, and we were winning when I left and we ended up winning that game as well, so much like our football team has been doing. Now the athletics are, are going strong and I was on the property doing some stuff on Saturday and I just peeked in at the game. And yeah, it was really cool to see how many people still showed up, even though it was a last minute change on a Saturday to, to support our students. So, yeah, that's it.
Great, uh, I am. I'm ha, I'm really excited for the, the news on the levy and seeing all that, cause I've kind of seen that as well. Um, you know, I know that, that committee is working hard. I got the flyer in the mail and. Awesome to see, um, all that that was put together there. Um, past that. This is my time of year, I'm coaching, so, yeah, fun times.
See you when I see you.
No, nothing, nothing new. I mean, I just think that the, it's hard to believe how quickly September has flown by and um. Uh, being from not Washington, uh, you know, just the, the level of smoke Friday was really shocking to me as an outsider.
And that, I mean, it was unusual.
And I, I was relieved speaking with um, the North Mason Fire Chief that this was the worst he had remembered since twenty sixteen. So I was relieved it was not an every fall event that I would be learning about. Uh, I told Rob, I'm used to, you know, you're canceling sporting events for ice or fog or tornadoes. The smoke is a, is a new one, so uh, hopefully that'll be the last for, for this year, but.
Hopefully that is out soon.
Yeah, but I've enjoyed spending some time in, in the buildings, um, um, Mr. Ellis and I have got to go see some kindergarten in action at Sand Hill. And we're gonna get over to see kindergarten in action at um, Belfair and we're very excited to have TTK starting and. Um, the principals are feeling great about um, the hires that they were able to do for those kindergarten openings. Because again, it is, it's a hard for a lot of reasons to uh, find a great candidates after the school year has started. And so I, I was thrilled that they felt as confident as they did about um, the pool, uh, and that they had so many people interested in coming to work here at North Mason. So, yeah, off to the races.
Can I add something really fast and just make this totally go longer? Um, a lot of the comments that I see on different um, places have uh, Dr. Michael's name in it. And they are so impressed with you and they're so happy that you're here and they see, uh, they feel different, they feel a change. And that's their comments, is they're so um, looking forward uh, to more years with you here, so. And that's not people that work here, not us, you know, it's community members that have either met you or watched you. So, good job.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I, I uh, went to the hub and managed to ex, you know. Answer, be on the hot seat and answer a lot of questions and not get uh, any tomatoes thrown at me, so.
Just put your hand, you get, bring a glove next time. That would hurt, Nick.
But it was great getting to meet a lot of the senior citizens and uh, um, you know, my father in laws that started attending the, the hub dances. Some people at the, at the hub and what a great resource for the community to, to have that senior citizen uh, outreach available. It's, it's really impressive.
Yeah, the more support they get, the bigger, the better they can be, so, yeah, good partner.
Yeah, but no, thank you, thank you to the board.
Yeah.
Very good. Alright, Nick, you're up with the self, board self-assessment.
Yeah, thank you. Um, as far as general meeting behavior, I found that the board's meeting behavior was satisfactory overall. And also as far as governance principles review, were these principles followed? Yes. And as a summary of the ten different um, items that are listed here, I found that yes, we were in. Uh, we did follow those governance principles, so overall I have us down as being satisfactory.
Very good.
And my only comment would be, I believe the principals appreciated the recess when they received.
I read the room, Nick. Uh, our next board meeting will be held on October twenty seventh. At six thirty here in the boardroom and then there will be a study session on October sixth at six forty right here in the boardroom. And we are done, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.